All right. It is 4:30 on April 9th, the day after the eclipse. And we all survived. And I just want to say to both, well, to Chief, and we'll say it again. You guys did an awesome, awesome job.
Thank you.
We are just so proud of everything. It went off like clockwork.
Yeah, most of the staff was engaged elsewhere, too. I mean, Shelley was down there with the, Shelley was down there in the park selling stuff.
No, it was great. It was great. Okay, Shelley, do we have any public comments?
No ma'am, we have no one's comment.
All right. We will proceed then with a public safety facility update. Mr. Hornis.
Good afternoon. Thank you all for taking the time. We are certainly excited to be here the day after the eclipse and talking about budget dollars and public safety facility. So, um, so I wanted to come and talk to y'all before we come back in two weeks. So in two weeks, we're going to come back with Burn's full team. So today, we've got Joel Kokomore from Freezing Nichols and Josh Holcomb from Burn Construction here. So if you've been out to the site, they're blowing and going. We should start having concrete by the 23rd. I think probably the day we're going to do the approvals. That's kind of our drop dead date for starting to pour concrete. So things are moving along really well. So as we get towards the end of it, just want to talk through some of the mechanics, you know, challenges we faced, where we sit with our budget, how that's kind of an involving process, and just kind of look for any questions that you all have before we get to two weeks from now. So let me get us started here. As we do with all of our stuff, here's our guiding principles from Kerrville 2050 for the facility. I wanted to kind of briefly go over where we started, where we were just two months ago, three months ago, and where we were when we got our submissions the other day from Burn, which are still numbers that are still fluctuating. And I'll talk through kind of why. So as we started, it was a $40 million construction cost for the building and kind of $5 million for fixtures, furnitures, and equipment, the land, sewer line relocations, all the things that are lumped into that. Now, when those numbers were created, those were all estimates, right? And as we continue to move through the process, we started getting more concrete numbers for, well, what's the land going to cost, right? What's the sewer line relocation cost? And staff digging in really hard on what are exactly those numbers going to be that are our portions? And as we evaluated those, those numbers were higher than $5 million. And so what we asked Burn to do was come back to us with a number that gets us to our 45, but it can't be 40. And so we did tons and tons and continue to do tons and tons of value engineering, right? I use the example of my son's middle school, right? If you go to the middle school and you look at the architecture there, well, that's some pretty fancy stuff, right? But that was based on pre-COVID dollars, and that was a different time. And so while maybe we had envisioned some versions of that, we had to look at what can we afford? And so we scaled those back, and so some of those architectural features are going to be nice, but not, you know, not nice, nice, I guess. I don't know what a good way to say it. I'm tired, so I'm not going to, I'm not going to have good words tonight, like real big $12 words. They're going to be 50 cent words.
What you're telling us is that we're not going to get a Taj Mahal.
No ma'am. You're going to get a really, really nice building.
I just wanted to make that clear.
Yes ma'am, no Taj Mahal. So when Burn came to us and was talking to us on the 23rd, we were at $38 million, 538 for their contract. That was their number for their portion, and ours was $5 million, 991. And that's kind of our estimate right now. So we got those numbers kind of revamped, and Burn's number went up a little bit, and our number went down a little bit. So we pushed a little bit of our stuff into their budget, and they accepted some of that. So ours went down, theirs went up. And all of this is the process of getting actual contractor numbers. They are putting bids on this stuff and in the hopes that we turn around in two weeks, we sign the contracts, and those are the numbers that those subcontractors are tied to. So real specific numbers, as opposed to when you go through that normal process of we hire an architect, they do a design, we go, yeah, we think it's going to be this, and then you get the contractor, and they're like, no, that's 50% more for that project that you built there. This one has that nice cohesive, the architect's working for them, and Burn is working for us. And so it's to make sure that that, all those numbers fit. So as a part of that process and a part of the value engineering, these are all things that were envisioned as a part of the project. All of those things are now listed as alternates to the project because we had to do, in addition to the kind of the building value engineering, we had to look at all these other pieces and go, okay, if we can fit these things in, this would be great. But right now, we can't fit them in. And so in order of kind of rank, and you've seen this before, storage building is kind of the first priority for public safety for police and fire. Second is covered parking. And covered parking sounds kind of fancy, but it's covered parking for police vehicles, which are very expensive cars, right? So you've got a $100,000 vehicle. If we can cover that and make sure that hail damage doesn't happen to it, which has happened to us recently, all the more better, right? So second in rank. And then enclosing the Sally Port, which is kind of the intake for police. Solid wall fencing versus, you know, wrought iron fencing. Not a huge deal, not the highest on that priority list, but important. You all tasked us with trying to be, you know, low-impact design friendly, putting buyer retention in, pervious pavers, those kind of things. As we work through it, some things made the cut, some things didn't. I will say that we have sent some stuff over to UGRA for them to consider if they might be willing to consider the project as a part of their grant program that they have. It doesn't, doesn't fit necessarily because they want you to have a whole lot more pervious cover, and we're constrained by how big our acreage is. So the building and the parking lot take up a good portion of that space. But they're going to consider that, and we've sent that stuff over to Tara and her team. And then limestone seating and flagstones for the entryway. So that's kind of the list of the alternates, right? If you sum all those up, that's about $1.2 million. So we realized that we've got $45 million to do the project, and we don't want to go over that. We also want to be mindful of like, what are all the things that we can get into the project now? Because we have economies of scale that we wouldn't have otherwise. If we have to remobilize, you're getting cranes out there, you're getting concrete things out there. Once we shut it down and we turn it back on, that's a whole lot more expensive than it was the first time. So we, as a part of the discussion today, have a recommendation to council to include the storage building into the GMP. So that's the guaranteed maximum price for Burn, right? That's not great. We're over $45 million if we're doing that. I don't want to propose that. I don't think anybody wants to do that. But there's some good news as a part of this. So if we include, if we look at the budget that we got on the 29th and the recommended budget that we're talking about here, the delta in that, which is a number that is fluctuating and has gone down, but if we include that alternate one, we're about $400,000, $450,000, over that 45 million. Should we include that into the budget? Now, this project has to be paid for through the bond proceeds. We wouldn't ask that you guys consider anything else outside of the bond proceeds that are here. Part of the, part of the issue that we're facing is that inflation over the last two years since this was approved has done nothing but just ramp up and ramp up and ramp up. Everything costs more. There is a benefit to that. As these funds were invested, we have earned some dollars off of that. And so what we would like to propose is that we place about a half a million dollars of the interest income from the bond proceeds into the project, and our hope is that that is a buffer that is paid back or looked at later to include additional alternates in the process. But we don't feel comfortable including the storage building into the project without having this in here as a buffer. So we have contingency dollars from the owner. We have contingency dollars from ourselves. But at this phase in construction, contingency dollars should be left to contingencies. We don't know what's going to happen. Something could, could transpire, and we might need to use those dollars. So we're going to go through the process of continuous value engineering. Josh and Joel can speak to questions we might have about what's called buyout savings, right? So we, they place the value on concrete or cabling or any of those trades. And when they get those contracts, that number might be a little bit less. Sometimes that number might be a little bit more. So we're always a little reluctant before we actually get those numbers to come back and say, hey, we had buyout savings. Because tomorrow, when we do furnitures, fixtures, and equipment, that might turn around and go the other way. So, so what we're asking is to kind of borrow against that interest income in the hopes that we pay that money back, right? And so that's kind of what I wanted to talk about. I know there's probably more questions than answers at this point. So Joel and Josh are fully equipped to answer those. I might take a nap while we, no, I'm just kidding. We're all here to answer any questions, but that's kind of the broad, kind of 50,000-foot overview. Really is can we use some of that interest income so we can include the storage building into the GMP with the hopes that either it's paid back into that interest income that we can use for future maintenance on the building, or we add another alternate, like the covered parking? And we come back to you with that request.
And Mayor and Council, real quick, you know, where this kind of came about, and really two things. You know, obviously, this project's been ongoing for, for a long time, been in the works, you know, voters approved, you know, the bond for it. I, I really want to commend the team, Michael, Chiefs, and, and Charvey, and Courts, and everybody who's been a process of this because we really kind of kept the interest income from it. They value it engineered this, you know, so much to an extent to keep it within that budget and bringing everything, you know, to a realistic piece. We didn't want to really say, hey, there's some, you know, there's some extra money on the table that we can use for it. You know, we got to a certain point in this process where we said, hey, this is kind of time where we feel that getting the project to 100% completion, we'll call it, even with the alternates, as close as we possibly can so we don't have to come back to it later, was kind of the intent and the goal behind it. What we don't want to do, not saying that we are, by not doing the alternates, by not doing any of that, the, the building is still usable, it still gets us across the finish line, which was the most important part within budget. These were kind of the extras that, that they value engineered and said, hey, what are some of the things that are going to continue to be beneficial for the project? That if we can do it using the interest from the bond, will again, just bring that project to a little bit more of a bonus on, on top of that. So that was kind of the, the charge, you know, for the team was, you know, yes, we want to get this project across the line and get it to as, as complete as we possibly can within a reasonable budget.
What would we have done with the $500,000? I mean, was it, has it ever been, it's never been designated the interest for something, I take it?
So it sits within the fund currently, but it's, it's undesigned to the plan from staff standpoint. This is a $45 million building that's going to need maintenance over time. And so I think the next item on our agenda speaks kind of directly to what this would be. A portion of those funds will have to be what's called, put in what's called arbitrage to help pay down, this is far outside my zone on a day like today, money that we wouldn't be able to use as a part of that income because that has to help me later.
Are there penalties possibly?
Yeah, penalties and such, and things like that. And so kind of, kind of divvy, divvy those dollars almost into thirds, right? For the purposes of this discussion. So $500,000, $600,000 towards future maintenance on the building. $500,000 towards, buffer was a word that was used earlier that I really liked. I don't like loan because buffer sounded better. And then about $500,000 towards that arbitrage on the, on the money.
Yeah, and really the first two items, you know, can you put the priority, prioritization back up there? You know, the, the big things on the storage building, covered parking lot, and I'm going to even throw in kind of the enclosures on this. The enclosure of the Sally Port, you know, obviously hail damage is one of those things that we have, you know, taken pretty heavily into consideration, you know, with some of, some of the vehicles and risk management. So the priority of these three things were kind of the three, we'll say the top three that we wanted to kind of consider. And that's why they were just looking at, at this piece, as kind of that, that buffer. And I think that's a good use of the word. Mayor, to answer your question directly on it, there's a lot we can put. It's unrestricted outside of the arbitrage piece. The fixed asset piece is, is going to be a big component that, you know, the team has been working diligently on to figure out how do we sustain a lot of things for, for the long haul? And we're going to continue to talk about sustainability throughout the budget process, you know, going into, into this budget, budget cycle. So we do have some flexibility. We are comfortable with this. Because, because, and the reason why we're bringing this now in the process was we wanted to get the building, again, as close to what we would say 100% as, as we possibly can without saying, ah, well, maybe we could do the storage building next budget year, or maybe we can do a Sally Port, you know, later on. You know, anything that we possibly could and feel comfortable with doing within the unrestricted money, we wanted to, to apply it to this project and then show where the benefit would be come budget time on, and the discussion after this with the fixed asset replacement.
What would the three, the top three cost? The total here is a million, two.
So it's 609,000-ish, 650 is a good number for a storage building. Covered parking is about $310,000. And then the enclosure of the Sally Port is, you're looking at about a million dollars for those top three, essentially.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Council, other questions? Well, that's $2 million just for the first three.
No, $1 million.
$1 million.
$1 million.
So 600, 300, and then about 100.
Oh, you said a million.
A million on the third one.
Oh, I'm sorry. I meant a million total. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Again, the sleep deprivation is kicking in.
Yeah, okay. So about $100,000 on the enclosure for the Sally Port?
About, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so a million total.
And as Michael kind of, you know, alluded, you know, the goal is, is to create the buffer. We're, we're hoping that we can come to council at some point. We just don't want to, you know, count our eggs before they hatch. And we may be able to knock out some of these, but again, this was, you know, what we want to do. We didn't want to put all of it necessarily into one piece, and, and I think this will help during the workshop on talking about fixed asset replacement is where do we need some, some of that funding to be? But that, that was kind of the discussion, you know.
I have a question about the storage. Because I spent three years on the County Capital Improvement Planning Committee, and I toured every single county facility in Kerr County specifically related to storage needs. I, it was kind of an eye-opener as to how critical it was that they get more storage space. Because, you know, you're talking about, I mean, what I saw in, in one storage facility that they had was an actual vehicle that they had to keep there as evidence for the next 40 years. And so my question about the outlay of the facility is how much storage is encapsulated inside that building? And what would the outs, what would this additional storage building be used for?
Yeah. So I believe it's 3,500 square feet. And it would be large evidence storage. You would have the opportunity for command vehicles, the gator. I don't know if that's going to be out there, the six by six? Yeah, ambulances, so, excuse me if I'm out. That, that large bulky item evidence that's going to stick around for a long time, that's where that would be housed at. Not air-conditioned, so like, it's a no-frills building. I mean, as no-frills as we could possibly make it, but, but it would, it would be, you know.
More storage for the bigger.
Bigger items, absolutely, yes.
Things that need to be stored.
And, and every place that we went to, that we toured, all the facilities, there was a couple of things that I heard every time. One was you can't have enough storage.
Right.
And the other one was you can't have enough outlets. And I kind of laughed about the outlet thing, but it's really true. But every, but every single conversation was.
So do we know how much square footage, how much square footage we have specifically designated to storage within, within the building? Okay.
Yeah, we can get you that. But 65,000 square feet for the actual building, and then 4,000-ish square feet for, for the storage space.
Okay. What about security? If this is evidence, an evidence storing building?
Right, so it's a fully secured complex, so everything's behind fencing, right? That's access only, and then obviously locked up. This is going to be key card access, I believe, on those facilities, so very secure.
But air conditioning, there wouldn't be things in there that apparently they don't need to be air-conditioned?
They don't need to be.
And I think there's a small evidence room in the actual facility itself.
Big evidence room. So we've got, we've got a big evidence room that's going to have all the things. If you've ever been in a PD and taken the tour, you know what it smells like when you walk into certain evidence portions. And they're going to be, this is actually the tallest portion of the building, again, for storage. This, these evidences, that there's a huge amount of that evidence that's going to have to be stored. So it's, I think those are the, how tall are those ceilings? If, they're 20-foot tall ceilings? Yeah, 24-foot tall ceilings for that portion, yeah. So there's evidence storage inside, there's evidence storage, large evidence storage is outside.
Very different. So the, the storage building itself does have two bays.
You want to come to the mic, Chief?
Chief McCall is here, but.
The, the storage building itself does have two very large bays. One, you can park an engine in if you had to, if there was something that we needed to do or bring into town, as we did over the weekend, we could bring in one of those, one or two ambulances and store it in there. The large evidence that he has is not the same as the evidence that he has inside the building. So this is the largest of the bikes, the things that you can keep secured outside. And it is all 100% inside the, the KPD side. So for their headquarters, for all theirs, it's not where I'm at, or the other, any of the public would park there, too. So it does have some of the building out there for the storage area. And a few others on that, for the storage, so.
There's bike storage area, large evidence. There's a car area.
Yeah, if you're going to talk too much, we need, we need to have you up here, please.
Mayor, Council, yeah, I think, I think the storage building is, it's a, it's a multifunctional building. I think, as Chief was alluding to, it also has vehicle storage, implement storage, storage for, for tools and other items. There's a small portion of the storage building that is devoted to evidence, kayaks, bikes, a four-wheeler. It's not designed to house a vehicle for 40 years. That's not what this building is designed for. So it is, it is items that are larger than a closet, but items that are, that are needed to be secured, but also items that need to be out of the weather and stored for the Chiefs and their use, their, their implements. So it's, it's a multi-use storage building.
Okay, okay, okay. Other questions, Council?
This, these alternates are in order priority, is that right?
Yes, sir.
So that storage building is number one for staff's request?
Yes, sir.
Now, was all, were all of these, these eight different items, were they originally budgeted when we talked about the 45 million? Were all these already anticipated to potentially be in the project?
They were originally conceived of as a part of the process that, that, that was discussed, yes, sir. Now, the flagstone, I think, is a nice feature that the architects were like, this is a really good feature that would look really, really nice, right? Was it envisioned as, as like a listed item? No, I think, but as an entryway feature, it's a really ni, you know, it's a nice feature. We'll have a nice one regardless. But the storage building, you know, the storage as a general concept, right? And so once we, once we look at, okay, we can fit this much inside the building, we're going to need this for the exterior portion of it, and that covers that, yes, sir. So I would say those first three, the fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, are things that we asked for and wanted to be considered, and they were all subject to the pricing, right? If budget was going to maintain and we could make that work, then great. If not, give us a value engine, give us an alternate, so.
I had to sum it up very simplistically. The team wanted to separate the difference between pretty and practical.
Wants and needs, yeah.
Yep, and so I think that's why we're, you know, bringing it to now is we are wanting to make sure we, you know, talk about and support the functionality and the practi, you know, practicability? Is that a word?
Practicality.
Practicality, yeah.
Versus it just being pretty. And so we wanted to make sure that we focused on those, those things.
I'm trying to get an understanding of what else could potentially be asked later, just. Is it right then, if we look at those three and it's a total of about a million dollars? Did we under-budget about a million dollars? Or did we not probably anticipate that these would be included in the project? And that's where this, these came in? And the reason I'm asking, like I said, is I'm wondering what else, just so we can start planning, and I'm, I'm sure y'all have already doing this, but so I can get an idea of what else we may be asked to consider at a later point.
So these are the only alternates, right? There's no, there's no ask beyond this. There's no discussion that any of us have had in the last 12 months about items that would be added to this after the fact. So this is, this is the list of those things. What I would say is, in the two years since that bond has been passed, the cost of everything has just skyrocketed, right? And so we have maintained the functionality of the building for all four of the component units that are going to be in there, court, IT, fire admin, and PD. Nothing's been added, or nothing will be, there will be no requests to add. There is a request to add that storage building today. And our hope is that, you know, we give that money back and we continue to have sort of, you know, good luck when it comes to, you know, contingency, and, and we get those buyout savings and we can start tackling that. But no, nothing's going to be added to that list and.
And you said we'd be taking 500 from the interest, and I want to make sure. You said hopefully we'd be able to, or hopefully we would pay it back. Can you clarify, like, are we planning on paying it back, or?
So I was talking to Julie earlier about it. If, if you remember a few months back when we were doing the airport budget, and we talked about $350,000 as our portion for that land purchase. And we talked about, our hope is that tech stock covers that 90% delta, but you have to be willing to say, we're going to, we're going to use that 350 and maybe not see it again. I can't tell you what's going to happen with the contingencies, right? Our hope is that the contingency will cover it, and the buyout savings, you know, the potential that we have would cover it, but we can't be certain. And so in order to get it into the project, this would, we would need to do this, right? And, and again, the ask is that we do this now because this is the lowest cost for that building at this point, so we wouldn't have to remobilize a few times. That's, I don't have any more.
Yeah, you know, on, on a $45 million project, and I know folks that have been in this, working on projects for a long time. I mean, we like to talk about inflation, obviously it's a real thing, but, you know, a million dollars, .02% of the budget, or 2% of the budget, give or take, you know, it's not a lot. We've seen a lot of projects, especially surrounding, you know, these things of massive scales, you know, the higher, the bigger ask, you know, typically come with a bigger price tag. And, you know, you'll see $6 million buildings that are going for $9 million. And that, and I think that's really a testament of, of the, you know, both the vendors and the team itself, they valued engineer it to what council had budgeted at that time. I thank so much to the tune, and I don't know if you could talk about some of the big ones, but, I mean, there was even some shrinking of the walls a little bit, and, I mean, there was a lot that kind of went into the value engineering piece of this. I mean, it wasn't just like, you know, hey, let's skim off the top. I mean, there were, they made some serious, I think, changes. Would y'all want to hear what some of those were? I don't know if you guys can talk about them at a high level?
So through the design-build process, we started off with the RFQ, right? We got the project program, we understood what the departments within the building were going to be, the general square footage of the building. Every iteration, as we've continued to design, there have been additional requirements from the department heads that we've, you know, identified as we continue to sit down and meet with them. So there's additional essentially costs coming into our scope that we're, we're realizing. Some of them we assumed on the front end and understood and knew that they were going to be there. Some of them were additions to our scope. So with every iteration of the design that we presented, we've sat down and gone through VE options. Now, the SD and the DD level were the largest VE push that we've had on this project.
Schematic design, design development, and value engineering.
Thank you.
Sorry, yeah. Thank you. So in the, in the SD levels, I think we cut $1.5 million out of this project. Now, some of those costs that you guys are seeing today are the alternates, the storage building, covered parking, Sally Port, items like that. Now, we have, on the latest round of, the latest budget that we've sent in to the department heads, to Michael, Joel, the project team, we have paved a path to get back to the $45 million, including the storage building, so without using that 500,000. So Roman, to answer your question, we do have the opportunity to get back there, and we've got the, the direction we need to head there. We've already identified 160,000 in potential savings that we're comfortable with right now. There's another. There's another, give or take, two hundred and thirty thousand that we're still working through the design on. Those are not numbers that we are firm on right now. But they are numbers that we're going to continue to pursue. So it's, we, we have the opportunity to get back to the forty-five million dollar budget with that storage building in there.
But we, we won't exceed the forty-five million dollars?
Correct.
Okay.
And that's our goal.
Okay. That's, that's an important factor to me when we considered the amount of debt that we were going to incur. We did say that we would have enough contingency to take into account, um, added costs, you know, unforeseen things at the time, as well as the inflation. And one thing I believe we made very clear was that it would cost no more than forty-five million dollars. And that was already a big ask from the community and they graciously gave us that opportunity to go into that much debt to do it. So I want to make sure that we're respectful with what they've granted us with and, um, not try to go too much, too much over that. So, thank you.
If that all worked out, we were able to, uh, put the storage building in there, would the covered parking then, would, would, would that be pushed? Of course, it would be at the top, but what are the chances that the covered parking could happen right away?
If the, if this half million was included within that, um, you know, I think what we would want to do is come back to you all and evaluate, you know, where we're at. Have we, have we had to use any of those dollars, right? No, and, and we've got contingency and we want to use that contingency for this. I think we would go ahead and do that. But I think really if we had to tap into any of that money, any of that half million, we'd want to come back and just, you know, talk all that through, right? So, you know, we understand that there's a lot of meat in those first three items. And, you know, the, the highest priority in that is that number one item. Unfortunately, it's the most expensive one out of the three.
I think the storage building's got the most volatility and the boat, the biggest schedule fluctuation as well as price fluctuations. We want to lock that in now. And then we have some time on the other alternates. We can do those post-GMP. Once we realize, once we've finished buying out some subs, we real-, we have some buyout savings. We have some contingency that we can part with because risk on the project has been mitigated. And then we can come back in a couple of months and update everyone on the next alternate that we'd like to include on the project after some of the risk has been abated.
I think that covered parking is important and, uh, I'm, and I understand and would agree, the storage building is most important, but, uh, so. All right. Thank you. Uh, counsel, comments, questions?
What's the, I know what a covered or an enclosed Sallyport is, but it's already secured facility, correct?
Yes, sir.
Why do we need to enclose the Sallyport? They're, if they take a detainee over being interrogated, right now, they take him out of a car and there's no fence, no nothing. And they walk him into a door. It's going to be.
A hundred percent. This is better than what they have, right? So the Sallyport that's uncovered is, 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 it will work, right? We wouldn't bring you something if, if, if it didn't meet the needs operationally of them. Given, I think it, it, it is a. It's an, it's a want, not a want, but it is, it would be a better option for them, right? You're fully enclosed, you're, you're, you're outside of the elements. They're going to be out there processing stuff, uh, potentially for, you know, quite a long time. So enclosing that in has a lot of benefits to it. Is it necessary? No, because they're.
Don't they have a storage building where they can pull a vehicle in there if they need to do all their stuff there?
No, sir. This would be pro-, I mean, no, they would, this would be processing to, to intake folks. This would be processing, I mean, if they were.
Intake's done at the sheriff's office. That's where they put them in jail. That's where they, only thing they do there is they take them there and they investigate, they interrogate them or whatever upstairs.
So not taking all that stuff to the storage building, I guess, is what you're saying. That's not where they would go.
Yeah, no, I, I, I think, Counselor, uh, this I think more is like, you know, um, to what I'm looking for, like evidence or something. So having that, having that enclosed where you don't have all the evidence kind of floating out and about or, you know, prior to a lot of the times, whether it's counting money or counting certain things. And, and I may be way off on some of this, only kind of looking at their current stuff, they would be bringing this stuff into the Sallyport, you know, the inventory and all of that before it got processed into evidence. I think it's more on the evidence piece than it is on like the, the detainee or suspect intake. Yeah.
All right, just.
But we can get clarification on that for you.
Yeah, we absolutely can.
I would love to see covered parking over that to protect our assets and protect vehicles and, you know, things like that.
And it's ranked in that order, right?
Exactly.
Is that way.
Thank you, sir.
All right. So what you need from us really is just how to move ahead consensus is what it sounds like? Okay. All right, counsel, we don't have to vote, but, uh, do we, are we in agreement that we should give them the go-ahead?
Yeah, I'm in agreement with that.
Yes?
Yes, ma'am.
Roman?
Is something you have to bring back to us?
Oh, yeah, this, so we're, so we've gone the first two iterations, right? We did the early work package one, early work package two for those items. This will be, uh, I don't want to say early, this will be the GMP, a design build amendment, kind of not the final. So, uh, but this will be brought back. Mr. Battle from Burn Construction will be here and we'll go through the workshop presentation, then you'll have the item on the agenda in the regular session.
Thank you. I just, I just realized it was under information discussion, no possible access, so.
Yeah, yeah, no, we didn't want to.
Going through that. High level discussion, making sure. Okay.
Get it to y'all early.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you guys for being here. We appreciate it. We'll see you again.
All right, we'll see you in a couple of weeks.
All right, two B, long-range asset replacement plan. I think we have several of you who are going to talk to us about this, right?
Two of us tonight. We've narrowed it down. We're going to, we're going to simplify it for you guys. So, good afternoon. Um, this has kind of been a long time coming and I will say before we hop in, it's not perfect. But we are super proud of the work that, that has been done over the last couple of years and going to kind of give you a little bit of background and some history on what we've been working on in regards to our assets. So kind of building on the same thing you guys are talking about, just from a little bit different angle. Maybe, there we go. So asset management, um, we keep talking about, it's something that we've really needed to improve on overall, whether it's for facilities or rolling stock, equipment, those kind of things. And so it really, having a good asset management program, what we've learned is just gives the organization some surety that we're getting the most out of our assets. And that we're planning to be able to replace them in the right way. So it involves identifying assets, really prioritizing both maintenance and also replacement of. And what we found through this process, it can really reduce costs. So having a good plan going forward and not just making kind of arbitrary or emergency purchases or as-needed purchases. But having a long-term plan really can make our money go farther. So increase the overall efficiency and increase useful life. And so those are all things we've really been focused on as we've gone through this process. So what kind of assets does the city have? Um, we have vehicles, obviously, that's what we see the most. Machinery, so that's going to be any kind of larger, heavy equipment, those kind of things. Tools and equipment, um, all the way down to things like drills and, and chainsaws and those kind of things. While those may be operational costs, still things we need to identify because they do have to be replaced. Buildings and other facilities, roads and underground infrastructure and a lot of things I probably didn't list here. So we identified the problem. So, um, I'll show you some detail on this in a minute, but prior fiscal year twenty-two, asset replacement funds really had little or no budgeted transfers. So just not a lot of consistency in, in how we were handling those year over year. We relied heavily on surplus funds, um, from one year to the next and have been pretty blessed to be able to have those funds and move those. But, you know, certainly not in a consistent way. We had limited information until Guillermo and his team picked up I work at the garage and really started tracking condition and life of vehicles. And that was kind of our first stab at our long-range plan and really narrowing down the rolling stock and what we had out there, what we needed to really get rid of and then what was kind of on the horizon. So we didn't have a lot of long-range planning efforts and really that's where we kind of took this on back in, at the end of fiscal year twenty-two, or at the beginning, I guess. So the result through this process, um, really aging assets weren't being replaced in a timely manner. And I know we've seen that over and over, um, when we bring new things, um, not adequate, um, to support the needs of the city. So really not giving staff updated equipment and things that they needed to do their job. And just having aging assets, um, becoming unsafe or just obsolete, we can't even work on things anymore because of the age of some of the things we have. So where do the revenues come from? Budgeted transfers in from respective funds. So remember your general asset replacement fund for financial reporting purposes tied to your general fund. We separate it out for budgeting so that it's transparent. You can see exactly what we're buying, exactly for what department and how. Asset disposal, so anytime we sell something, um, those funds go right back into the asset replacement fund to replenish that. Although sometimes those are small dollars, depending on what we're selling, sometimes we have some bigger items. And then interest revenue, um, just like in any other fund, we don't rely on that. Um, it's budgeted really small. We've been blessed, um, in the last two years with that revenue source, but it's definitely not something we want to hang our hat on. So giving you kind of a look here at historical revenues, um, so you can see where money has come from. So on the top there, that's the general fund and we went back all the way ten years and you can see just some really inconsistent, uh, budgeted transfers. Some random kind of things that we discovered back in twenty seventeen, we had some monthly transfers by department. Thought that was interesting, um, way to do it, not to say it's wrong, but just inconsistent. And then we would have some flat transfers and then, you know, really specific for exactly what we were planning on buying for that year. So, um, but not a lot of sustainability over time and making transfers that are going to, you know, hold us out through the years that we anticipate bigger expenses and those kind of things. So you can see, um, on the right, the actual transfers compared to the budget. And so that's where that excess funds, uh, comes in. For one reason or another, we had some funds, uh, remaining in general fund proper that were transferred at year end. Or at the beginning of the year, depending on, uh, how things closed up, over to help the asset replacement fund. Of course, twenty twenty-one, we all know what was happening then, um, and we cut back, tightened the belt. Um, and what we found is we had excess revenue at the end of the year and all of that was put over to asset replacement, which was really needed. Then on the water fund, a little bit more consistent, um, but we really don't have a lot of excess funds typically in the water fund, just because of how we budget. Would it be an enterprise fund in the way it's business-based? And so, um, smaller dollars, of course, but smaller needs as far as rolling stock and equipment. Infrastructure's a different story and we've talked about that a lot through wastewater plans and things like that. So what did we do? So we established a team back in October of twenty-two. I think everyone thought that I was crazy and by the end of the meeting, they sure did. We had about fifteen members on this team. Some of them are here in the room, um, both chiefs, Charvey, um, David Barrera, Trina, I probably won't be able to name them all, Ashley and Danielle. But pretty, kind of a mix. Um, we had some people from division managers, um, up to department directors, depending on what their level of organizational, uh, work process was. So that we were making sure we had the right people in the room, um, to make sure we were talking about these things at a departmental level. So we had input from all of these folks and we sat down in the first meeting and said, all right, what do we want out of this? What do we plan on, on getting? And planned out our process, identified some goals, um, and really just worked through what we wanted to see in the future. So developing new budget tech techniques, um, coming up with sustainable ways to manage, uh, what we needed and then really deciding what it is we need. Because, you know, you can see the, the right now, but, but it's harder to see further out. So as we went through this process, um, teams were divided up and assigned to departments, um, all the way down to division level. Uh, they went out and physically inventoried all of our assets. Um, they did some condition assessments. Some of the stuff just was DOA and so we just needed to get rid of it. Other things, uh, that we needed to put on the books that weren't on the books before and just really worked in a detailed way, uh, to make sure we had as many things as we can identified and for tracking purposes. Now, is it perfect? No, I can assure you, we find things, um, on a regular basis that we need to take care of. But I think that's just the nature of the business we're in, but it, it's really good, um, from an inventory standpoint. Um, we assigned some purchase dates, so we knew when we acquired these things, if we didn't know that already. And then based on condition assessment and some other factors, we assigned replacement dates. And of course, those fluctuate year over year, so this is an ongoing kind of moving target because something we think might need to be replaced next year, maybe we go to replace it, it's perfectly fine. So that may get pushed or flip-flopped with something that maybe is in poor condition. So this is a moving process. It can't just be, okay, we know what we have now, it's over, we're going to, we're going to move on. We sorted everything by category and department, um, also by fund, um, and then we listed them by whether it's an asset, um, it's a vehicle, facility, potentially CIP. So we had a lot of things that really came to light that we're like, we can't manage that in asset replacement fund. That's going to be something for down the road. Let's put that on, uh, potential future, uh, CIP projects. And then is it operational? And so we'll talk a little bit about how we, how we did that. So once we sorted everything by replacement year, we were able to really take a look at what does that look like? I want to talk about that in a minute. So the outcomes from this, uh, team, after basically a year of working through this process. What we figured out real quick is that we don't have the bandwidth to do a facility condition assessment properly. And so, as you know, we did an outsource for that, which we're expecting a report back sometime May or June, I think, is what Kyle's latest, um, was on that. We identified some critical needs and, and I think that every department, uh, person here who went through this process can say, we definitely did some right sizing. When you really take a look at what we have, um, some of the feedback I got was, we can replace that, but we don't use that, so why would we replace it? Or, you know, we don't need trucks, instead we need gators. And so, you know, just really making some shifts in the kind of tools that we're using. And it really made people just take a really good look at operations and how we're using the assets that we have. We knew we needed a software to be able to track this because an Excel spreadsheet is wonderful, um, but it just doesn't give us the tools, uh, that we need. So looked at some different softwares, met with some different companies to see what was offered. Again, we removed any potential few, um, future CIP projects or, or larger needs. And then we determined we needed to set up a facility and repair reserve. At this point in time, as you know, it was budgeted just as a reserve within CIP. As Michael was just alluding to with potential interest revenue, maybe even creating that into a fund. And so though, that is a reserve fund that's kept separate for, um, specifically for facilities and buildings. We're not quite sure yet, but we want to bring back some recommendations on that and, and have some discussion once we get that facility condition assessment, uh, back. Um, and then we determined that we really needed to create a reserve for larger apparatus, so like fire trucks, for example. And we've just had those conversations in the past year and what that looks like over time. And Chief and his team have worked hard to get a long-term, uh, fire apparatus replacement, uh, plan in place. So we have that going on for us now too. So other major steps, um, finalized, um, funding source for near-term fire trucks, we, you know, we just did that with tax notes recently. Then we created that separate apparatus replacement plan for fire. We contracted the third party to do the facility condition assessment. And then we adjusted estimated asset replacement needs through twenty thirty. Um, we could go further than that, but we really feel like there's some tweaking that needs to be done over the next few years to really say, okay, we feel good about this and this is, this is where we need to go. Um, and then we did set up that facility, uh, repair replacement reserve.
David?
All right. So we'll go over some of these, uh, items in asset management. There's, there's, there's a lot of stuff. It's very, very complex when you try and figure out what, what, what do we have, you know, what, you know, from a department level, all the way across the organization. I know for public works, when we look at what we had, it's, it's, it's a lot, but now you bring in other departments, it's like, wow, we, we really have a lot of stuff. So it's, it's really beneficial to, to get, get an idea, a good snapshot. So, um, identifying the assets, what we've done is, uh, get all that, what, what, what the department's had, right? Specifics on it as far as, you know, the age, uh, do we have any redundancy? Do we have more than one backup pumps, uh, backup generators, dump trucks, whatever it may be, uh, determine the useful life. Uh, there's various methods to, to get the useful life. Um, it's on whether work orders, has it been in the shop often? This unit may last five years. Uh, is it twenty-five years old? Yeah. Industry standard has it lasting thirty years, uh, things like that. So, uh, re- recording the age of, of that, of that asset, uh, and as I mentioned earlier, calculating the remaining life. Estimating replacement dates and costs are very important, um, and then determining the priority level. You know, is it, where does it rank in the, you know, priority for your operations? So the software we're using, um, it's asset essentials and we're able to capture all the data that, that we, we get, all the inventory, all the assets. We break them down by the, this is an example of streets. So you'll see right there the dump truck. And this is all their dump trucks and we're able to get, get them by the name and the year. And then the specifics is the current condition and the condition date, uh, the date that these units were assessed, uh, replacement cost, uh, expected life, uh, estimated replacement date. So the expected life, that can change, um, over, e- every year. You know, today, I think this unit will last twenty years. Uh, if it's in the shop three, four, five times over the next year or two, we may say, yeah, this thing may need to get replaced in twelve years, fifteen years, so. And so the data's not in there yet for all the, all the units, but here's an example. This is, again, the, uh, the dump trucks and streets. So this will show, uh, the grand total of work orders that were done on that, how many hours were put into there. So we're missing a lot of data that we have to put in there still. A lot of it will work with, coordinated with Guillermo and, uh, his team, uh, to get some part cost, uh, things like that. That help us determine, you know, what, what's the, uh, ranking of this unit based on age, uh, work orders, how much have we spent? You know, if a unit costs eighty thousand to replace, we've spent thirty thousand, it's, it may be close to, let's just replace it. Where do we have here? Oh, okay. So self-assessment, trick me on that one. So self-assessment evaluation. Currently, we got work order portion is in the software. We're doing that for operations, but we're also gonna start migrating that into the actual asset. You know, if it goes into the shop, if it goes, any kind of maintenance done on it, we want to capture it through a work order. So that's still in its infant stage. Capturing historical data is challenging. We have a lot of databases that we have to go through, whether it's a finance database, the garage, HR, there's different databases that we have to utilize to get that. But we're simplifying the processes with technology, whether it's QR codes, iPads, smartphones, those types of things. So future part is improve the asset databases and reporting. A key thing here is preventative maintenance. There's a lot of things that happen from that purchase date and disposal date that are important. Can we extend it by preventative maintenance? Yes, we're buying equipment, but important thing is preventative maintenance. So analytics and reporting, that's just done through work orders and, again, some data inventory. Again, making sure that you have the inventory that's accurate. Make sure we have one, a one-stop shop, as I like to call it, where I can go to and say, here's all the assets that we have. You know, here's all the replacement states. You know, Julie can say, what does 2026 look like, 2027? We have that available. Inventory, so yeah, welcoming other departments, which we've done, whether it's independently or integrated. So we've got a good start on that. And then there's always gonna be training, training, and training. So that's ongoing. And you want to take over on this one? Financing part thing?
He didn't want to do this one. He didn't want to do this. So one thing David didn't mention that I probably didn't too, is Asset Essentials software that he talked about, that's a software we already have. And so as we worked through the vendor that we already have, what we realized was what they're using for streets repair on GIS and those kind of things to track work orders will also do vehicles and equipment. And so the next step we're trying to merge there is to decide whether it's functional for garage, and Guillermo's working on that, to see, can we get to the point to where our, we're merging both together so that we're all using one software? The depreciation piece on the finance side, we're not sure of yet, but we're still working out those bugs. Because in ideal world, risk management will be able to use it and budgeting would be able to use it, and departments will be able to use it to manage their own assets. And then garage work orders and things would be in there. So we would be able to see it at a snapshot and not have to do multiple work. So we were blessed that that software would do this, and so there wasn't any investment in anything else. So not to be kind of scary, but these are estimated needs by fund. And so what you're gonna see is the blue being general fund, and when I say that, that means general government. The orange is general fund also, but that is specifically public safety. And then the water is the gray. So what did we include here? We included rolling stock, so anything that rolls down the road, especially if it's licensed. Tools and equipment over $10,000. And so we had to kind of decide what is operations and what is truly, should be paid for out of asset replacement. And so we kind of decided for now, until we bring you an updated policy recommendation, that $10,000 makes sense to us, because that's where we financially capitalize things. So not to say that we won't track things, we have things tracked down to $5,000, we just didn't include them in the dollars for asset replacement fund. So we, our kind of assumption is that anything under $10,000 would be included in operational budgets, because those are not capitalized, and so they're really considered supplies, I guess, for lack of a better word. We're not putting them on the balance sheet. So that was, we had to draw the line somewhere, and so that just made sense to us. And that could change, you know, with direction from council or, you know, other ideas as they come forward. So we did include those things. We did not include fire trucks, so that's even scarier when you look at some of these numbers. And we didn't include anything potential CIP, because we're not able to manage that out of asset replacement. That's really, needs to be bigger one-off type projects that we would bring to you separately for those needs. And again, we can talk more about that when we get the facility condition assessment and kind of make some decisions. So basically what you're looking at is fiscal year '25 need about 1.6 million. And we'll talk through what's already kind of included in that. There's, of course, some escalators in there. We haven't gone back and really said, hey, let's go get updated quotes on these things that we're talking about replacing. The other thing to know, too, is that over the next few months, we're gonna be working with departments really closely to say, this is what we show that, based on everything that we've gathered, and now that it's brought back together, that is on your list for '25. So let's update the condition. Does it need to be replaced in '25? Can we take '25 and move some of it to '26 because that year's a little less? You know, can we take '27 and move some of it back to '26 because that year's a little more? And so we still have some work to do on the leveling of this, because really the idea, and I know we talked about this in budget the last couple of years, is getting a consistent way to fund the asset replacement fund so that we can forward budget. And as you've seen in the last couple of years, supply and demand. And when we talk about fund balance in a minute, what you'll see is we've pre-authorized some things, you know, the ambulance, those kind of things, because we're on a three-year wait. So we can't always say, well, we're not gonna talk to you about this stuff until June. And I think that's been some of the problem, is we're not talking about it until June. And so now we're talking about it now for five, 10 years from now. And so are we there financially? No. I mean, I'm not gonna even pretend that we can pull out of the general fund as a transfer every year what we need to cover this fund. And so, so just talk about fund balances really quick. So general fund, as we talked about, has relied heavily on excess fund transfers. And so right now, year-end estimate for general fund, $619,000. That includes the pre-approved ambulance purchase that we've already talked about that's on order. It's in there because it's encumbered. So that bill's gonna come due, so we need to reduce the fund balance by that much. $409,000, that's committed leases, so those are leased vehicles or equipment that we have currently. So we've already considered those have to be paid for in '25 before we can do anything else. And so then I included the 750 transfer from fiscal year '23 surplus funds, they're in red, only because that's part of our budget amendment that you've seen in your packet. It's obviously, it's not approved yet, so I put it in there just so you would know what my assumptions were. In my mind, an ideal reserve is, you know, $400,000 to $500,000. That would be a great place to live. We're nowhere close to being able to just cover our needs, let alone start talking about a reserve in asset replacement. But we need to at some point. And I think saying the numbers out loud is the first step to figuring out how do we get there? So I don't have any magic answers. We have some great ideas. And so moving forward, we're gonna continue to work on that, bring some recommendations, and we'll talk about future in a moment. So on the water fund side, a lot healthier there, a lot more consistent budget transfer, so you can see the difference. Also, remember, we don't have the dollars in assets in water as far as rolling stock and equipment. Now, in the ground, completely different story, and that's why we talk about long-range master plans and things like that. One of the things that we didn't include in this is contingency for things like pumps and things like that. So we don't want to buy a $100,000 pump if we don't need a $100,000 pump. But we need to know we have that in the event that we lose a $100,000 pump that we need to replace. So, you know, we definitely want to build in some contingency and some reserve in the water side, because those are a lot bigger dollars if something like that goes out. But we don't need to keep things on hand just for the sake of buying them. So we think an ideal reserve there is about $250,000. That would be for major emergencies. So next steps, as I said, we really want to develop and update our current asset replacement policy. It hasn't been updated in quite a while. I think Guillermo updated that back in 2018, somewhere around there. So using the data that we have now, we think we can bring a much more robust policy to the table, and then work with departments to really prioritize replacements. So they know their operations better than we do, and that's one thing we continue to say, whether it's operations or assets, they know what they need. We, you know, I can't sit in an office and tell you how many mowers parks needs. That's not for me to say. But we've got to figure out how to prioritize that so that we can take care of the needs the best we can. And the things we can't take care of, make a plan for how we're gonna address that going forward in one way or another. We'll make some CIP recommendations for larger needs once we get the facility assessment back, and then consider some other funding options. I mean, you've seen what kind of things that we've done with grant funding over the past couple of years. So we're gonna keep turning over rocks, you know? We're gonna find outside sources where we can. We're gonna fund things any way we can to avoid hitting general fund. I mean, we've said that, I think we've proven that we've done that, and we'll continue to do that. And then continue rightsizing efforts. And I think that's really where the departments have, and I can maybe speak for Chief Maloney and throw him under the bus, because he's said it to me a couple of times. We didn't, you don't realize until you really get in there and get your hands dirty and say, we need to change some things. And maybe this isn't what we need, maybe we need something new, or maybe we don't need this at all. But really taking a look at, are we spending money in the right place? And is what we're investing in really the tools that our staff need to do their job? And then develop department-specific replacement plans. And we've been working with individual departments on this, and we'll continue to work on that over the next few months. It won't be perfect during budget, but we feel confident at least that what, the information we have is good information. How do we get there? You know, as I said, we're just, we're gonna have to continue to work on that, because I'm not gonna tell you we have enough money in the general fund to move $2 million a year. We don't. But we can work toward that and start making some long-term plans and say, okay, we know in five years, this is gonna come due. So what are we gonna do now to plan for five years from now? And that's really what this team has been focusing on. So just wanted to open it up kind of to your thoughts and discussions or questions for any of us in the room who were kind of part of this team.
What is the value of our assets in comparison with our debt?
Without the ACF, I don't know that I could tell you that. I know our net position is about $160 million, but I don't know, without really looking. And you have to remember that depreciation is a factor in that. And so when you look at things like streets that are grouped, and so it's really hard to get down to that individual. Now, what we can easily say is, as far as rolling stock on the books, X dollars is what we spent to put those assets on the books. Now, when you take depreciation and those kind of things, it really changes. But I can get you close by looking at the ACF.
Okay, because you had mentioned that, you know, in looking department by department at stuff that you use, stuff you may not need anymore, that sort of thing. Is there, is there a way to, to sell those assets?
We're already doing it. We're already doing it. In fact, we have sold probably more in the last six months than I have ever seen the city sell.
Because I'm thinking that might be able to help get that.
It does, it does. And we use GovDeals, so we post it on, you know, there's some requirements that we have to go through. It's an auction site, so that, you know, it's fair bidding. And sometimes they're bigger dollars than others. Most of the time, it's not big dollars. Sometimes it's stuff we sell for parts. I mean, they laugh at me because I sold a roll wrapping machine that didn't work anymore. But, you know, we got $20 for it. So $20 we didn't have, in my mind, but there has been a lot of things sold.
By department, you guys are all going through, deciding what you need, what needs to be replaced, what will last five more years, and what needs to be sold?
Yes. Okay. Yes, and there's been a lot of that that's been happening. Chief McCall says I try to sell stuff when he's still driving it, but it's not completely true. But we really did some serious looking at what we had, and there's been a lot of things sold this year already, and departments are still looking at that. Because, you know, it's a trade-off. Sometimes if you want something, especially if you want something new, then you have to make it to some decisions about, you know, wants and needs. And, you know, at the end of the day, we want our staff to be safe, but we want them to have the tools they need to do their job, because, you know, there's certain things that citizens demand that we do. They want us to mow, so we need to make sure that the mowers that we're using are safe. And, you know, I use mower as an example, because we have a lot of them. But we, you know, we want police vehicles to be safe and up to date and have the right things in them, and just like we do fire trucks. And so I think it's really a balancing act, and that's what we're trying to get to.
I applaud and thank you guys. This is a big, big undertaking.
It's been a joint effort.
And just to thank everybody that's a part of that, and we've needed it for a long time. And I just say thank you for all the extra time that's going into it. And it will pay off, absolutely, it will pay off.
Yes, ma'am.
Counsel, any other comments?
Say thank you all very much for the work you all put into this. This speaks volumes of what we're trying to do for the long-term stability of our city operation, so I appreciate that and everyone involved. And the way you are also able to summarize all this information for us.
You don't want to see the raw data.
Could we, I do have just probably one or two questions on the reserve contingencies you had for the general and water fund. Are we sure that that's enough? And is that, are we expecting that that's gonna be a reserve contingency that we want every year and that we're gonna build on that every year? Or that that's just what we want to have at the end of?
Yeah, I think maybe that's two parts. So when I say reserve, what I mean is, no matter what our needs are, let's say our needs are a million dollars, just for a flat number, and we move a million dollars from the general fund to the general asset replacement fund. Even though we've covered what we know we're gonna buy, we want to have $400,000 to $500,000 that is untouched. We don't have it. I mean, we don't, we don't have it. But in my mind, that comes for, we have something damaged that has to be replaced right now, and it wasn't budgeted, and we don't have the money in fund balance. So where do we go and get that money? And so you have to get super creative when those kind of things happen. And so we're trying to plan for things we know. We're working, right? I mean, we're in the field, things happen, things get damaged, you know, vehicles get wrecked, pumps go down, those kind of things. So we need to be planning for the what could happen, not just the what we know to be true. I mean, we know the assets we need to replace for the most part. We kind of know what they're gonna cost, you know, pending, you know, inflationary factors and those kind of things, escalators from when we bought them to now and that. But we don't know what we don't know. And so we need to plan for that as well. And I think it's gonna take a while to get there. I mean, it's not something I can say, here's a magic wand and we're gonna do this and it's gonna fix all the problems. I think we were blessed to have ARPA. We were blessed to have some grant money, and you've seen, you know, all of our departments really step up and submit some really good grants that have gotten some really good equipment. I like to call those in a way, the gift that keeps on giving, because now those are on the books and also have to be replaced. So it's great, because we have new and technology and equipment and things for our staff, but how do we plan for that long term? And do we, can we, one thing the police department's doing is taking their vehicles and putting them on, we know we can't replace 16 vehicles in a year. So how does that look? And so they're working through that to say, okay, this is what we have, or we're about to have, and how's that gonna look over the next 10 years? And what are, how are we gonna rotate those? And who are we gonna give them to? And all those kind of things. So every department, I will say, is taking it really seriously. And my hope, I guess from my angle, was that everyone had to look at it organizational-wide. We get so busy doing business for our business that, you know, I don't say you forget, but maybe you don't realize really the scope when you look at everything organizationally wide and what that looks like. So I think that was really helpful for everybody, so.
And then to finally follow up on the second part of that question was, is that going to be something that we're looking at?